The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Graves.
Present.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
That's not me.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed.
Present.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Present.
Alderman Norrion.
Present.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg. Twenty-five present.
Before I'm being present, we will begin today's meeting with prayer. Give it all honor to God. Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. We would dispense with line item three, introduction of round of guests. Any introduction of round of guests? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, as always, I would like to have as my special guest Greg Meyer, and today I welcome my dogs. You heard him bark.
Okay, that was you, okay. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is October sixteenth. It was on this day in nineteen sixty-four, the manager of the Yankees, Yogi Bear, was fired after losing the World Series to the St. Louis Cardinals, or St. Louis guy let us win. It's also Boss's Day, so technically, President Reed, happy Boss's Day.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, Friday, October the ninth, twenty twenty.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes dated October the... Oh, man, just my...
Ninth.
Thank you, the twenty-two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, and Alderman from the thirteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading board bills.
Board Bill one forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance to submit a twenty-twenty-one annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, as required to apply for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS, HOPWA, entitlement programs. Authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of twenty-twenty-one CDBG home ESG and HOPWA funds. Board Bill one forty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance repealing ordinance number six-eight-two-nine-four and six-seven-zero-eight-nine, and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and S.I. Warehousing Company, Inc., a Missouri corporation, for a period of ten years with two five-year and one four-year mutual options for the purpose of moring only of one thousand nine... I'm sorry, one thousand six hundred eighty-three linear feet for anchorage and moring for barges and other vessels and containing the severability clause. Board Bill one forty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and S.I. Warehouse and Company for a period of ten years with three five-year mutual options containing the severability clause. Board Bill one forty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderwoman Iggracia, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven-zero-eight-nine-two to restrict installation of small wireless facilities in the right-of-way adjacent to the frontage of single-family lots and contain the emergency clause and the severability clause. Board Bill one forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Vernon Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the West Curb Line of North Kings Highway Boulevard at the intersection of Vernon Avenue and North Kings Highway Boulevard. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD Committee, Board Bill one forty-three, to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill one forty-four and one forty-five, to Streets Committee, Board Bill one forty-six and one forty-seven. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one twenty-three, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of streets permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Maple Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the East Curb Line of North Kings Highway Boulevard at the intersection of Maple Avenue and North Kings Highway Boulevard. Board Bill one twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance pertaining to commercial vehicles as such term is defined herein herein and prohibiting such traffic along C.D. Banks Avenue from the eastern boundary of North Newstead Avenue to the eastern boundary of Pendleton Avenue and exempting from said prohibition non-commercial pickup trucks and emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks when providing emergency service to non-commercial vehicles, vehicles making deliveries to nearby addresses, and vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of ten thousand pounds or greater and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Coronavirus Special Committee, Board Bill one thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Calder, President Reed, and Alderwoman Iggracia, an ordinance approved by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, and authorizing the City Board of Election Commissioners to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant, one thousand thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars, to provide financial assistance to local election officials for the expenses incurred between June fifteenth, twenty twenty, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty, associated with the Safe Administration of Election responsibilities, including Safe Election Day for administration and containing an emergency clause.
Madam Clerk, please make note that's one million thirty-four dollars, one million thirty-four thousand two hundred.
Okay.
All right.
The following board bills were reported out of the HUD Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill sixty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June third, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map and in city block five-two-two from A, Single Family Dwelling District, to H, Area Commercial District, to the H, Area Commercial District only at fifty-seven-twenty DeGiverville Avenue, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block five-five-two-two and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill sixty-two, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on June third, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from B, Two Family Dwelling District, to F, Neighborhood Commercial District, and city block three-eight-three-three-point-one-eight, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block three-eight-three-three-point-one-eight and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-nine, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the third, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map and in city block three-nine-five-three from K, Unrestricted District, to J, Industrial District at five-ten South Savory Street, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block three-nine-five-three and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one zero-one, sponsored by Alderman Vaquaro, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on September the second, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the A, Single Family Dwelling District, to F, Neighborhood Commercial District, and city block four-six-six-nine, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block four-six-six-nine and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill one zero-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on September second, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J, Industrial District, to H, Area Commercial District, and city block three-nine-zero-four, so as to include the described parcels of land in city block three-nine-zero-four and contain that emergency clause. Board Bill one zero-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on September second, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map and in city block one-six-four-eight from B, Two Family Dwelling District, to D, Multiple Family Dwelling District at thirty-six-hundred-and-thirty-six-twenty Texas Avenue, so as to include the described parcel of land in city block one-six-four-eight and containing that emergency clause. Board Bill one zero-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on September eighteenth, twenty twenty, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the Forest Park Southeast Form Based District map from NG two, Neighborhood General Type Two Zone, NG three, Neighborhood General Type Three, and B two, Boulevard Type Two, to B two, Boulevard Type Two Zone, only in city block three-nine-eight-three, containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one fourteen, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderwoman... I'm sorry, Alderman Mohammed and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation as authorized by the City St. Louis Charter, Article sixteen, Section six of the Annual Budget Ordinance, seven-one-one-six-zero, for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, amounting to the sum of two million dollars for the purpose of establishing the Justice for St. Louis Families Fund, which will provide funding for cash rewards for tips and leads that ultimately end in the rest of anyone for the crime of murder in St. Louis and contain that emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill one thirty-four to the perfection calendar.
Second. Been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Been moved and seconded. We spend our rules for purposes of moving Board Bill one thirty-four to perfection calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderwoman Graves.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Rhodey.
Rhodey is aye, Rhodey is aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquaro.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Twenty-eight aye votes.
Aye vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventh, and spend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill one thirty-four. We would dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to amend Section one of ordinance seven-one-two-one-zero dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty by revising the legal description of Scotter Street from Jefferson Avenue to Elliott Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing in accordance with charter authority and in conformity with Section one-four of Article twenty-one of the charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one twenty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Reed, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Missouri Department of Homeland Security for the purpose of funding to support the cybersecurity coordinator position at the St. Louis Fusion Center upon approval of the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Reed, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the mayor and the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency Fire Prevention and Safety Grant to fund the twenty-nineteen Smoke and Co. Alarm Program upon approval of the Board of Estmen and Apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of a perfection consent calendar.
Second. From twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, and Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our perfection consent calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill ninety-four, sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum two hundred and fifty dollars and other good and valuable consideration a quick claim deed to Remise, Release, and Forever Quick Claim unto the Veterans Community Project, a certain city-owned property located in city block one-eight-six-eight, which property is known and numbered as thirty-seven-twenty-four Aldine in the City of St. Louis, Missouri.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill number ninety-four.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we
perfect Board Bill ninety-four. It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth. Twice. I know I heard Alderman from the twenty-third, but there were several others. There were several seconds also, and Alderman from the first. So, Alderman from the eighteenth, please proceed.
First of all, this board bill will... It's fifty houses in the eighteenth ward. It would take care of homeless veterans, and when we say homeless veterans, when we say the definition of veterans in this bill is that anyone who raised their hand to protect our country will be allowed. This... We will have fifty houses. The veterans will be... It will be trained, will be encouraged to become independent and get jobs and get their own home. And it will be a huge step for the five veterans, and it will help our community. It will also help our tax base. It would be a very humane and humane, and we will have a groundbreaking today at two-thirty, at thirty-seven-twenty-four Aldine. I hope the Board of Alderpeople will consider voting for this bill. As a person who was previously without a home, I know, I feel the veterans, and let me say this, I never thought I would have the honor of being before such a distinguished body as this Board of Alderpeople, to present a bill for something that is dear to my heart, because I feel the pain, and I feel, I know what homelessness is like, and this will be something that will be with me until eternity.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please add my name to the bill. Alderman from the first.
Yes.
I was going to ask that my name. I worked with the Alderman from the eighteenth. He knows this, quite close in making sure that this got done. So I wanted to ask if he wouldn't mind if I would add my name. Usually I don't add my name to other people's bills in their wards, but this was something that we did collaborate on, and if the Alderman from the eighteenth doesn't mind, I would like to add my name.
Certainly, we would love for you to add your name, and I appreciate the help that you...
All right, thank you. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Yes, I had requested last week from Alderman Todd to have my name as a co-sponsor also. Thank you.
I would love to have Alderman from the thirteenth, who is a longtime committee person, friend of mine, have her name added.
All right. Alderman Norrion, sorry, I missed you the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Alderman Todd for his work on this. I don't think it's any secret that a lot of our homeless are veterans, and some of these folks are suffering from PTSD and addiction issues that stem directly from their service to our country. And I'm a pretty firm believer that when we ask someone to serve our country, and they do so honorably, that we have a responsibility to those men and women. After looking at similar projects in other cities that have given a hand up to these veterans and allowed them to pull themselves back up, I can't help but think that we should be doing more of these projects in our city, both for veterans and for folks who haven't served. This is absolutely going to help get folks off of our streets and back into work, back into school, and ultimately, I believe it'll save our city money, it'll help our community, and it'll ultimately help some of our most vulnerable residents. I can't commend Alderman Todd enough, and with his permission, I would move that this bill go in bank.
If you have my permission, again, this distinguished and honorable board, certainly, I feel honored to be amongst such a distinguished group of leaders in our community.
A motion by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third, and the Alderman from the nineteenth, and I heard someone else, it may have been Alderman from the twenty-sixth, that we make this bill in bank without any objection. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make it over to that, add every Alderman's name to the bill as co-sponsors. Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add my name as congratulating Alderman Todd and all the other individuals and organizations who work collaboratively to make this happen. We know how to work with our unhoused neighbors in a way that takes in best practices and looks at other models across the country, and so it's long overdue, but I'm excited that the City of St. Louis has finally taken the advice of practitioners and folks who are doing this work every single day to move forward with the project, and I hope to see it expanded in a meaningful way in the future.
All right, Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Evans. We are collaboratively in joint partnership on this project, and I cannot say enough for those who made the decision to bring the project to St. Louis. Jason Kander and others who have been very successful with this project in Kansas City knew that we were interested in this, and I'm just excited about it. And for those who did not have an opportunity to read or attend, last Saturday, we again did another project with a ribbon cutting that is going to support veterans, and it is a therapy clinic for all the brain injuries and other kinds of problems with PTSD and everything else. And so we're really glad to see that this population is getting more support, because they've already given to this country, and it's definitely needed. So I'm excited when I see that smile on Jesse Todd's face, because I know this is something that's dear to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to add my name as co-sponsor, so thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourth.
I was going to add my name as a co-sponsor as well. I didn't know if mine was already added, but I'm just thankful and grateful to be working along with Marlene Davis and Jesse Todd. Jesse Todd has done an excellent job with presenting this. I found out I was involved with this project because our wards, but together, all three of us, with this project, so I'm elated to be included in this, and I hope I see a lot of you this afternoon at two-thirty for the land dedication that's on Aldine between Spring and Grand. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? All right, Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize the close on perfection of Board Bill ninety-four.
Just want to say thank you very much. I would like to close by saying thank you.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the eighteen, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third that we perfect Board Bill ninety-four. It's also been amended in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, carries. Madam Clerk, please make note, Board Bill ninety-four has passed.
Oh, noted. Board Bill one thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Calder, President Reed, and Alderwoman Iggracia, an ordinance approved by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, and authorizing the St. Louis City Board of Election Commissioners to accept the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant of one million thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars to provide financial assistance to local election officials for the expenses incurred between June fifteenth, twenty twenty, officials for the expenses incurred between June fifteenth, 2020, and December thirty-first, 2020, associated with the Safe Administration of Election Responsibilities, including Safe Election Day Administration and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognized on the perfection of Board Bill one thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill one thirty-four.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, Alderman from the twenty-third. Alderman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill one thirty-four authorizes us to accept and appropriate just over $1 million from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, which is a nonprofit organization founded by Mark Zuckerberg and his wife Priscilla Chan. They sought to provide assistance to election authorities across the country in the form of about $300 million with the grant funding to help local election authorities with the increased costs of running elections during a global pandemic. In the state of Missouri, approximately thirty or so local election authorities, both red and blue counties, have been awarded grants. The city was lucky enough to get just over a million dollars awarded. I've been working on this for a few weeks with the new Democratic Director Ben Borgmeyer and Mr. Stoff, the longtime Republican Director at the board, and you can see the breakdown in the board bill, but the $1 million is going to be spent on increased staffing, you know, for the satellite locations. This took a big burden off of the election board, and the staffing costs they were going to be experiencing with those satellite locations and the need for additional employees to staff pole in locations to help with cleaning and everything else. Also, they need additional people to help process absentee ballots because we've seen a huge influx in absentee voting, which is great. So roughly, the breakdown is, also, they're going to get some new equipment out of this. You can't, they have to only, they can only purchase equipment that they can get and deploy for this election, so you know, they can't replace all, unfortunately, all the voting equipment that desperately does need to be replaced, and I'm hoping we can find a solution for that in the next year or so. But they're buying a bunch of equipment to assist with absentee voting, sorting devices, things that rapidly open envelopes and things. I know they're also upgrading some of their tech and like their servers and putting some security measures in place for their ballot counting room, which I think is important in these times. So all in all, this is great. It's somewhat time-sensitive, you know, I think they're probably already spending some of this money, but we want to make sure we properly appropriate it, at least before Election Day, which is why I suspended the rules and asked to move it to perfection today. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do hope you'll support this, this bill, and you know, I don't think, I think you all know that the election board's got a very tough job on their hands in this, in this time, working in a pandemic with the huge increase in absentee voting, with the massive amount of people we hope show up on Election Day. It's going to be hard work. I think they're well-equipped. We've got good leaders there at the board, and I was, it's been an honor to work with them to help secure this funding. I'll happily answer any questions.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I don't have a question, but I think this is another one that we should do in bank if everyone's willing. I think that the satellite library, at least over at Booters, has been really busy and appreciate all the work they do. I know my name added, but I would also ask that we do it in bank if everyone's in favor of that.
I'd like to second that motion.
Alderman from, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, that we make Board Bill one thirty-four in bank. Any discussion? Opposition? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill one thirty-four should be amended in bank. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close.
I seem froze.
Oh, sorry. I'm here. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I renew my motion to perfect Board Bill one thirty-four.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth, Alderman from the twenty-third, and I believe that Alderman from the sixth, that we perfect Board Bill one thirty-four. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries.
That is the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Third reading. Second. With dispense with line item seventeen. Third reading with part of engrossment.
Board Bill ninety as amended sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of and appropriates funds awarded under the Emergency Solution Grant Program of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Missouri Secretary of State's Assistant to Local Election Authorities COVID-19 Grant Program, and the Department of Health and Human Services Relief Fund are relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on third reading of Board Bill number ninety as amended.
Mr. President, I move for third reading of Board Bill ninety as amended.
It's been moved on from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, this grant authorized $4,391,329 toward homeless initiatives. It also provides $150,000 to the Board of Election to help with elections, and $181,320.45 to help the human services to help out with the COVID relief efforts.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from tenth, that we third reading finally passed. Board Bill ninety as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Graves.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Twenty-nine, aye votes.
By a vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the twenty-second, third read, and finally passed. Board Bill ninety as amended.
That is the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill ninety as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the motion for our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the nineteen, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution fifty-seven. Sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Evans, Alderman Colder, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Oldenberg, Alderman Davis, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Orion, and Alderman Boyd. Leave options for City of St. Louis employees on Election Day.
Alderman nineteen, Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution number fifty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to ask that we refer this resolution to the Public Employees Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman.
A whole lot of
I don't know why I'm, I don't know why I'm missing these today. So, I think it was Alderman from the twenty-seventh and a few other people, but we'll call Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? Alderman from the tenth.
Yes, please add me as a co-sponsor to this, please.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the twenty-third. You're muted, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-third.
There we go. Okay, I got it. I just want, so anyone listening understands that this doesn't mean there'll be poll workers outside working for candidates. It means that there's a shortage of people, election, elected election officials working inside, helping process, you know, when you come in, show your registration and that. So it isn't to let the workers off so they can become poll workers for any one candidate. This is solely to work for the Board of Elections on Election Day in strictly a nonpartisan position. I just wanted to make that clear, so if somebody's saying, gee, why are we going to let people off? It seems that, you know, because that was the first question that went through my mind, and it was cleared up, and I thought I would just make sure to make it clear that this is not to work the polls as an electioneer, it's to work the polls for the election, for the election Board of Elections because of the shortage of people wanting to work because of COVID. And that's all I really had. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth.
I would like my name added to the resolution.
Thank you.
As a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Alderman. And Madam Clerk, please make note of that, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the twelfth.
I would like to have, President Reed, I'd like to have my name added also.
All right, thank you. Alderman, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Can I move that we embank this? Am I saying this right?
Yeah, yes, yes, you, yes, you can. It's been moved by Alderman from the fourth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? I see the Alderman from the first, do you object to that? You're muted, and then Alderman from the
Aye.
Yes, yes or no on this, so we can, and then I'll come back to any further discussion. I just want to see if anybody's objecting to the embank.
I am objecting.
Okay, all right, so we're not going to do the embank. We'll come back to you. Alderman from the eleventh, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add my name as well.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, add Alderman from the eleventh. All right, if there isn't any further discussion, it's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, that we refer this resolution to public employees. Madam Clerk. I don't think we need a roll call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, the second resolution fifty-seven to public employees.
So noted. That is the first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Miss Landis unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcement.
The following meetings will be held via webinar. Tuesday, October the twentieth, 2020, Public Safety, we have a meeting at ten a.m. Wednesday, October the twenty-first, 2020, HUD, we have a meet at nine a.m. Rules, we have a meet at ten a.m. Thursday, October twenty-second, Public Safety, we have, I'm sorry, Public Utilities will have a meeting at one p.m. And Friday, October twenty-third, Board Board Meeting, ten a.m. via webinar.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement that we will have a public employees meeting on Tuesday, October twentieth, at one o'clock via webinar.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that we'll have a transportation meeting on Thursday at ten o'clock.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Thursday at ten o'clock. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, on the public safety meeting by request of Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, there will be public testimony only during the portion pertaining to the workhouse. So, and she had asked, so we'll do it, only doing that part. I don't know, I think we'll let Paul Payne do his presentation, and that would be limited to questions and answers from the Alderman. Other than that, it will go ahead and take public testimony as by request of the Alderman Clark Hubbard from
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcement? Any further announcement? Excuse Alderman, I believe everyone is present today, so we dispense with line item twenty-five unless there's an objection. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adjournment until Friday, October twenty-third, 2020.
Seconded by Alderman from the tenth and a few others. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Stand adjourned. Everybody have a safe, good weekend and a great week next week. Bye-bye.
Be safe.